We'll get started here. Actually, this is not the council meeting we're going into first. We have committee meetings here first and they won't take unless somebody on the council has something to bring up. I told you last meeting that I did not have anything in committee. If somebody wants to bring something forward in committee, we'll address it now. Does anybody on the council want to bring anything to committee? Okay. That being said, we will call the director December council meeting together at this time. I'll have the clerk call the roll, please.
Chris Head?
Present.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Present.
Mitch Magnus?
Present.
John Ower?
Present.
Brian Oleswal?
Present.
Keith Kirkpatrick?
Present.
Joe Williams?
Present.
Dana Taylor?
You have.
At this time, I please ask everybody to please stand and Mr. Kirkpatrick will lead us in prayer and we will say the lead.
Let's pray. God, we just, we thank you for this evening. God, as we come together to do business over this great city, God, our hearts are broken for the family and the friends of the loss that we've suffered. God, I pray for wisdom. We continue in the search to find them and God, to bring closure. God, I pray that you would just bind us all closer together as a city and closer to you. God, thank you for these positions you've put us in, give us wisdom to lead and to guide the people of the great city of Harrison. God, we love you. It's in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, I'm on a deviate a little bit from the agenda tonight because the council does not have any objections. I will start out with our police and fire departments and Mary Jean wanted me to recognize them, so if you, whichever one wants to go first.
Okay. I just want to thank the community. They have went above and beyond for taking care of us, as the fire department, you know, the restaurants, the churches, the individual, I mean, Red Cross, they have us out a lot and through all this and they're going to be there continuing, I'm sure, you know, through all this, but for the last two weeks or a week and a half, you know, they were bringing us food, calling us what we needed and the community's been great, small community and thank you. Do you want to say thank you?
He said it for both. Okay. Is everybody got a copy of the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, I entertain a motion for approval of the number of the 29th. How many are there? A motion and second. Any discussion on the minutes? There being none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Thank you. Okay, at this time, today we had a meeting with John and Amy's family. As you can see, they wanted to come tonight and ask the council for something. I think we all relay what that Marvin said. Our hearts are out to you. I don't know what to say. I wish we had a closure in it, but they want to come tonight and I said I will let two people speak tonight. They are asking something and I told them there's a lot of things I can do personally, but there's things that I cannot do. We can give any kind of work, we can send equipment out, people out, and all that stuff, but what they're asking for is a monetary amount that the council will have to, okay, I cannot do it. So at this time, who is going to speak? Who is going to speak? Okay, first one, go ahead and tell who you are and...
My name is Allison White and I'm John's sister. And we just come to you to please continue to search for my brother and sister-in-law. You can't even imagine the pain that we are going through. You really can't until you experience it yourself. My brother gave to this community every day. He didn't take vacation because he felt that it was his duty to be here in case somebody needed him. He would leave Christmas and Thanksgiving and birthdays to go and help people. You had a child locked in a car, he would come and help you and a lot of the time free of charge. And I just ask that you please, please help us and continue to search for them. You know, John, in his own right, he was a hero to this community. He saved lots of people. We got a call last summer of a boy locked in a gun safe. John dropped everything and he went there and he got that boy out. And we all know what the outcome would have been if he hadn't have done that. And we need, we need you. We need the community to stand behind us and help us and they have with food and thoughts and prayers, but we need to find them. We do. John and Amy. So we just, we just ask that you please just take it into your heart and think about it. There is not a person in this town that has not been touched by the things that they have done, John especially. With the schools and unlocking cars, fire department and the police department, there's not one person that has not been touched by him. And I ask that you please take that into consideration before you make any decisions here tonight, to remember who he was and who he is and who he will always be. Please.
My name is Joey D. Meyer. This is my wife Tara, Amy's sister. My company today is John, Amy's brother-in-law. As most of you know, today is 13 days of searching and we have not found many clues, although in the past few days, some clues have came to the surface. To be graphic, tissue has been found in or below the lake. It's been sent to the crime lab in Little Rock for analysis. Tonight, as a family and a proud citizen of Harrison, Arkansas, we ask you to drain and excavate the lake to find John and Amy's body at all means necessary. Boone County has done an extensive search of the county, which leads us to believe that they're still in the lake as we are still finding clues. We as a community have to come together and use all resources to find John and Amy before any children or other people have to find a body or pieces of our loved ones in the park or lake area. Our family would like to thank everyone in our community for everything thus far and your ongoing support and prayers.
What they're asking for is for the city to totally drain the lake and clean it out just like we've done in the past. This will be probably a little bit different situation. It will probably be a different type of process. Wade, do you want to speak on what we, we probably estimated around $400,000. They want us to bring in funds?
It could, it could be.
But it could be less.
The last time we went through this, the process cleaning the lake, the total cost was right around $200,000, so that gives us something to gauge. But that was also an operation where the primary goal was to clean it. We're also able to do that at a time when we were allowed to let the lake drain on its own until it's the point we can get them in work. So basically, you know, two things would be needed. One would be the approval of funding and two would be waiving the requirement for a competitive bid process and authorize a meeting to go ahead and negotiate with Kraus Construction. I've already contacted them and we actually had a meeting this afternoon starting to formulate a plan on really how we're going to do this operation, what's going to be different from last time. But Kraus has the equipment, they have, and they were actually the last contractor to do this, so they are familiar with, you know, with that area and some of the processes to get this started. So really, I think those are the two things that I would need from council if you want us to start this process. And my recommendation on the contract that we would negotiate with Kraus would be a cost plus, which would basically be, you know, all of the billings to the city would be based off of actual costs plus a agreed amount percentage on top of that. That way, that allows us to adjust the operations we need to. If you went into a lump sum or a unit price contract, then we get into the issues of changeovers and things like that and you can slow things down. We don't want any of that in the way of this operation. But they are, in general terms, ready to start preparing their operation. They just need, just need to go ahead and we need to get everything negotiated and put in place. And I do have to do some permitting work with ADQ, but that will have to on the side.
Is there any state funding available that could help with this?
There could be. I don't think that's something that we can plan on as we make this decision unless somebody else knows something of it.
The county has filed some paperwork. We're actually waiting on some more paperwork to put up that goes into state, but those things are not guaranteed. So as far as us getting outside funding for it, there's that possibility. There is that possibility, but, and we'll have to file appropriate paperwork for it to get started. To go back a little bit on things, you know, our fire police department and the city is not, we're not stopping. We're not totally shutting down operations and quit looking, you know, that's not going to happen, but we have scaled back and the county has scaled back also. But family, I mean, there's some people, you know, everybody's full of theories, everybody's got their theories, but there is some type of evidence that the lake could be the answer. I can't tell you that. I wish I could, but it'll be up to council if they want to authorize that expenditure and I'd have to think about it. You know, I'll give you time to think about it. I entertain a motion right off the bat, so. And the question, do you want to ask the family any questions? Do you want to ask anybody else any questions?
I would have a question, Mr. Mayor, and, you know, we've gotten some updates from the city and obviously from the press account of it. As far as, you know, obviously financial, we would bear the majority of the cost, but the fire department and I guess the police department are not normally equipped to do something like what we're talking about as far as the search and even draining the lake. You know, you're searching outside help. I don't know, is the state of Arkansas or can any federal agency help us with any of this? I mean, not knowing the individual steps, for example, cadaver dogs or what steps have been taken. Can you give us any information in that regard?
There is other outside avenues that we can pursue, even right at this time here and we've asked the family if they, if they've got a list of those avenues, we will pursue those avenues. They asked me today if I'd call in the National Guard and I talked to those above and the National Guard will probably not count. Their expertise is not in water and they asked, well, the OEM department asked, I had to go through channels to even get to the guard. They said that, they asked me who we called in and I said, well, we used to, Arkansas gave them fish and said that'd been the first call we made. Their expertise is not in that. Yes, they would bring, if we had a disaster, yes, they're going to bring big lithium, but water issues are not there. But the family does have some sources they want us to pursue.
Or of engineers. I'd like to say things come to me that, you know, again, I mean, I don't know who specializes in these types of events.
If you've got...
You know, I don't know.
If you've got a suggestion, bro.
This is bizarre as an event that's ever occurred in Harrison, Arkansas. So, and it's unprecedented from the standpoint of how you get some sort of closure or, and so it's difficult to make a decision without having a little bit more information.
Well, like I say, we're not going to totally shut, right, but we'll, we'll look if we find something or whatever. I can't tell you on that expenditure, that is a pretty good sizable expenditure, but that's, when we, when I turn that figure into the state, well, actually to the county today, so they can declare a disaster and they, within that disaster decree, they put in there, they call for the National Guard too, but that probably doesn't happen.
A FEMA funding, anything?
Well, we'll have to apply for that later on.
Yeah, but I mean, things keep coming up in my mind. I mean, do they, like, if you went to FEMA and said, can you help us in this search?
Well, their steps, yeah, we have to take. The Corps, Wade has been, you know, believe it or not, they've been...
We've got standing permits through the Corps to maintain and operate within that lake as we need to. I don't know if they would have any additional resources to offer, possibly the pumping, the speed at which we could get it, I don't know. FEMA funding only comes through disaster declaration and somewhat after the fact. I don't know how long it would take.
Have we reached out to U.S. representative senators or anything, made them aware of this?
Believe it or not, they're trying to expedite a few things, so. There's only some, you know, things that we can do and there's things that we can't do, but we don't want to stop. If we, like I said, if somebody's got a suggestion, we're going to try to pursue. And we're kind of exhausted everything that we know right now.
My question is, search and recovery is immediate. The funding that we seek to fund, that search and recovery can come later, correct?
Okay, now, if we, if you decide to fund this issue, we might put money in.
Correct. But my question is, the FEMA and all that can be retro.
Yeah, but FEMA, if we do get into FEMA, it could be a year from now. You know, that's, we're going to, we'll proceed on avenues.
My question is, what fund does this come from?
From the reserves.
Reserve fund?
At this point, it'd be general fund reserves.
What's that value currently?
Three six.
About three six, seventy-three five. What's that?
And what have we, we've documented anything with the mayor, it's all unprecedented.
Two and a half.
Just clarifying.
Like I said, I wish we had some, and that's all we're trying to get to, the hook. It is unusual even people talk to around the state, I mean, only you have, runs into a creek, but we have a lake, but there is a lake, you know, they have an additional lake too. And normally Marvin and Paul stepped in only, but normally you're going to find somebody within several minutes hours.
Yeah.
And the longer dragged out, the more, it's harder it is.
Harder it is. And they have been incident, we had all some professionals in here that we contacted, you know, and they said, you know, they found some, you know, found some within 14 days. You know, it takes longer, it depends on the weather, warmer it is, you know, several different issues, you know, there's been no set schedule, you know, I can't answer that.
Can you speak to some of the people that were here? You said you, the experts that were here, who, who we had assisted with this thus far besides our own staff of police and fire?
Yeah, we've had the park service, that's the park service there, the Menonite Disaster Rescue was here with their sonar and boats and all this, that's what they do. We've had, we've had dogs from, cadaver dogs was in here from Louisiana, Arkansas, Oklahoma, Kansas City. I'm sure I'm leaving somebody out, we've just, Gaming Fish, they come in, dove and used our sonar. We've had Baxter County come over with their helicopter, Benny Magnus, he come over and done all the fine and stuff for that. The Boone County Search and Rescue, and then they got involved with the Marion County Search and Rescue.
Jimmy Magnus?
Gaming Fish and the Menonites, we had divers also.
Well, so the volunteers, how many volunteers do you estimate we've had?
Well, we've had, I know one day they had, we started off, they had 30, Boone County Search Rescue had 200 show up one day.
Probably 400 or more.
Yes, I mean, we've had, we've had several. I mean, we've, I mean, we, we've pulled several different directions, you know.
And what leads us to believe, you know, obviously the search has been in the lake and how far down the creek?
Actually, they have searched all the way to, if I'm understanding that, all the way to Tait.
So what leads us to believe that the lake is the source we need to keep looking at? The proximity?
We haven't found, we haven't really found nothing else.
Okay.
I mean, I'm, I mean...
And the tissue we did find was just downstream of the weir?
We've, we've found, we've found some yesterday in the lake, in the, in the, in the lake. They found some down below the weir. We found John's clothes down below the weir, right below the weir. I mean, we, I'm, I'm not saying they're in the lake.
Right, I understand, I understand. I mean, just getting ideas, I mean, if we're about to make a decision, I need to be for sure, I mean, we're committing...
We've searched up, we've searched several times where it all started, several times. We've walked the tunnel, we've looked in the drain hose, we've looked in the stand-up pumps, we've looked around, we've walked that out, I mean, several families have walked it out several times. We went back here and there was some, there was some deep, the mayor went with us and we took the excavator up there, there was some deep gravel, gravel spots where the landowner said that was, it was new, there's new spots. And we dug them out, we dug them all the way down to Harpen to make sure, and I mean, because all this stuff was new. I mean, I'm, everybody says, so are you sure they're not where it all started from? I'm not sure of nothing, I'll be honest. I mean, we haven't found.
Yes, and Marvin, she probably says this is bizarre, again, as a situation, we've had hailstorms here, tornadoes.
I've been here 32 years.
We've never had anything like this.
And, you know, we, we're used to, my department is used to, they're competitive. They're used to finishing things up. And these guys are, I mean, they don't want to quit and they're not quitting, but they're just exhausted. I mean, they, they looked, they went back and looked, they walked and, you know, we've had our guys and the volunteers yesterday helped, all the guys, people sitting in here helped yesterday, walked that creek back and forth in another direction. And, you know, we say, well, we're 90% sure they're not in the lake, but that's where we find all, what little bit of stuff we've found has been right there.
And I apologize for asking so many questions, but again, this is something that needs to be explored.
You know, and I'm trying to explain it the best I can.
Wade, just a question to you again, if we take this action, is there any specific part of the lake that we're looking at? Is there, you know, are we going to start in sections or are they going to, how are they going to do that?
The discussion that we had earlier today is, as we've sort of...
Excuse me for interrupting, but would we like to start at the weir and go backwards?
We will, we will likely focus between the bridge and the weir, between the main street bridge and the weir, will be that area first, yes. Partly because that's the ideal area for us to move the equipment that's going to need to be in there and so we need to clear it as we move that equipment in, clear the area in order to stage a road into the lake. So that, that is what we've planned to start, in that area first.
So more towards the bridge or more towards the weir?
It will be more towards, starting with, where the park, straight out from the parking lot that goes down. Because that's where we will need to clear before we move any type of material to build a road in there. Because we don't, we don't want to build out anything out in the lake on an area that we've not removed or still washed in.
And Kraus is a fantastic company, so I'm sure one of the reasons is they have more equipment than we do.
They absolutely have more equipment than we do.
And can you get their site here and do a better job?
We do not have the equipment to do this type of operation.
How many days will it take to drain the lake?
If we, if we left it as it is with the flows that are coming in, I mean, it, it depends on the weather. It could be weeks.
And it's raining.
You know, we, we will be using pumps, which is something, which is one thing that will be different from when we've done this in the past. How many pumps, we don't know. The flow downstream and kind of the estimate what we've got coming through there has been around 40 CFs based off of some, some stream gauges, which is around 18,000 gallons per minute. So we're going to need to overcome that. So we're looking at bringing in pumps, multiple pumps, in order to get ahead of what's coming in so that we can get that stream down to its basic channel and allow us to start moving the equipment in. The amount of time it will take is going to depend a lot on the weather. The more rain we get, the more those springs, it's a spring-fed stream, there's several going on upstream and the more rain we get, the longer they're going to be flooded and the more in key phases.
I want to, I want to make sure everybody understands too. I think when we start, this is not going to be a quick deal because they're going to clean it out and they're going to take it to the city farm, I'm guessing.
We are going to...
But we've got to see if it's good.
I was going to say, we, we're...
We've got to check things out and they ain't just hauling it up, you know.
And won't be like it.
It's got to dry out, so it's going to be, it's going to be wet, it's going to be, you know, and it's, so it's undertaking that, I don't think it's going to be a quick deal on my own.
We'll do, we'll do it as efficiently as we can, but we do have to, and the goal is not to clean it out, the goal is to be able to see what we're pulling out. We've got some options that we're looking at in order to do that as we are pulling it out. That's one of the reasons why a cost-plus contract is going to be ideal in this situation because that allows us to adapt what we're doing as we need to instead of going with fixed cost or something like that.
When I say clean it, I don't mean that to say I'm bad at the family. I mean, when we take it out, we've got to check, we've got to look, we can't just run through it.
Okay, assuming that this comes from public works.
Are you talking about funding or?
No, my committee.
Oh, your committee. We're not, well, we're in record council, but...
I would like to make two motions. Number one, I would like to recommend that we approve the cost-plus cleaning of the lake.
Okay. Let's leave it, let's leave it at that, right there. You hold your second, please.
Okay.
Oh, he has a motion to approve the cost-plus cleaning of Harrison, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, have a second. Any discussion?
Okay, again, my responsibility within my area is to make sure that, uh, that more like the gatekeeper, keeper of the money, we're gonna have to ask this again. We estimate around four hundred thousand dollars.
That's, that's.
And I understand, that's, you, you, you've never done this before, we cleaned the lake, it's not like this, and, and all the things that go on with it. Do we expect, just for clarification, we're gonna make inquiries and, and funding requests as the state, federal government, FEMA, our congressmen, our senators, to help us with some of this funding at some point in some way to recoup some of this money, correct?
We'll go, we'll take every avenue that we, we have available.
Right, so we're gonna try and recoup some of this cost.
It'll all depend on, uh, the reaction to the disaster funding that the county sends in.
Right, now, last time we, we cleaned the lake, did we get funding for that?
Yes.
And we got that from?
FEMA, we declared disaster.
Yes, and that process is underway.
Okay.
I mentioned our request, my motion comes from having some really tough conversations. And some understandings that I feel like.
Well, this is by far and away the most difficult decision that any of you sitting in these seats will have, or you've been. And certainly in my service in different organizations, this is a very difficult decision, because we are responsible for the entire city. And, uh, it's important that we keep everything in right frame of reference, so I agree with your understanding.
Okay, any further discussion? There being no further discussion, I'll call.
Do you mean in the minutes to specifically state that we're waiving the bid process?
Well, he, he probably got a second motion on that, that's why I didn't want to put two motions on the board at the same time. Okay, no further discussion, all of them cleared by?
Aye.
All of the opposed, same, motion carried. Okay, Mr.?
My next motion is that we waive the bid process and allow the, uh, Kraus construction.
We, we place an emergency waiver, and we will, we let the public works take care of it.
Absolutely.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that, this motion? There being no discussion, all of them cleared by aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same, motion carried too. We will get to work with you.
Thank you.
Now, hopefully you can find some. Okay, we will move on, and, uh, does any of the department head or anything have anything they wanna bring up?
You could have held it for me.
All right, we'll get back to, you know, the motion. Park report, I think Chuck is the only one actually wanting to say something tonight, and, uh, oh, yours.
Uh, I came in November to tell that we applied for the park tourism matching grant, and we've been awarded two hundred and one thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars to put the all-inclusive barrier-free playground. That is an awesome thing for the community. Uh, I just wanted to say we're very excited about the plays down in Harvard on that building. We're gonna actually have air trims on that side of the park. I'm very excited about that, so I just wanted everyone to know that we did accept and get awarded by hand. We're in the process of. Two thousand, that came up in three thousand twenty, we gotta wait for that funding, but they, they did award us the thing, so we're excited about that.
Y'all got a copy of this?
We did. So thank you both.
That's gonna be great for our park deal there. We applied for two grants, I know we got this one, and we're hoping to get another one, but it didn't happen. Uh, anytime we apply for a grant, you get one, you apply for two, you get one, it's a plus. That's great. Anything else, any questions, Chuck?
What was the total cost on that, you want me to?
Uh, that was exactly half of what, that was what we asked for, so multiply that comes too, and that's, the whole project was listed as costing when we made the bid, so.
Luke will have to do that, Chuck can't move five or two.
That was good.
You're the finance guy, you should already have that total.
I've got it, I'm ready, I promise, I've already done this too.
But no, it is, we got, you know, Rotary Health, Rotary Club was the ones that brought this to me and parks to do that, and they're, I mean, they're the state. Tiffany was the president, she presented at the, the deal, and her presented at the, at the meeting, she did a great job, and we're so grateful about that. That's gonna be a great thing for the park.
You're fantastic.
Especially the bathrooms, because that's what I get to blame a lot, is the real bathroom, on that side of the playground, so that's, that's your group.
And we'll do a lot of in-depth work, we'll make, it'll be, it'll be great, especially with that, that funding. All right, we'll get into committee reports, Mr. Wigan, and, and, Mr. Magnus.
Uh, Luke has got financials for October, uh, I'm almost ready to post up there, everybody to look at, I'm not quite done yet.
Nothing changed from last time I recorded, so it's just.
And we got two things for audit, we'll speak to that.
Um, our water and sewer audit, uh, finished the, the field work, uh, this, actually, they finished last week, so we're hoping to have that in the next couple of weeks. Everything seemed to be really good there, uh, aside from a, a big adjustment to inventory, we're adjusting inventory up, but we're hoping to have a better handle on inventory um, with this new software that you all have allowed to wait and purchase for next year. Um, it's always good for inventory to be up and not down. Other thing is, the website bought it, and they're, I don't know that they officially signed, sealed, and delivered it, but it's ninety-nine point nine percent done. We're just kinda waiting on the stamp of approval, and, uh, we need to get it to you this year in a timely manner to approve, so we will be doing that as soon as we get there.
But Magnus, you're seventeen, but anyway, yeah, we had a good audit, Chuck, and you, you will be getting those papers all the way in. And, uh, sometimes they come out via email, I think last one was through email, or is it not, we have to send them out, or something? But they'll get those out to you. Anything else, Mr. Magnus?
No, sir.
Mr. Oak.
Mary, thanks.
This is Gregor.
I think my chiefs have done wonderful. And, uh, in coordinating all the work, and I know the, the employees are absolutely worn out, but I think that they've done everything that they can do, but they're still there going. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your work in that too, 'cause I call him Mr. Mayor.
I'm actually, I had, you see something up on the screen that I, that I had asked, that Jeff put up, and, um, you know, it's been a very difficult night for everybody, but this is the kind of people we have working here. And I don't know if you saw this Facebook post, that these three firemen, um, helped this young man with a, I think during Halloween?
Halloween, it was.
Yeah, Halloween.
Halloween in a costume or whatever it is.
Yeah.
Is that your baby picture, Marvin?
No, that was in color.
The fact does show you the type of people that work in this community, in this city, they didn't, they weren't obligated to do that for him and, and be involved with him, but he just goes to show you what special people they are.
They're good guys.
They do that with all the little kids.
Yeah, that's a normal, that's a normal happening, my grandson went down there, uh, last night at a birthday party, and he wanted to go see a fire truck, and he went down station number one, so, you know, that's the kind of people we have. Come in.
Thank you.
Mr. Gregor? Is that all you can say?
Oh, for now.
Oh, I can't read, oh, I can't read that. I got you on that one, didn't I? Okay, Mr. Oak. Mr. Head.
No, sir.
Okay, we'll get down there into ordinances and resolutions.
Make a motion that we place this ordinance on its third reading by time of release.
Place on its third reading by title only, and a second, any discussion? Okay, any discussion? There being no discussion, I'll have the dirt called roll, please. Mary Jean Gregor.
Yes.
Mitch Magnus.
Aye.
John Oak.
Yes.
Ryan Ogle.
Yes.
Keith Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Joe Williams.
Yes.
Dana Taylor, absent. Chris Head.
Yes.
An ordinance adopting minimum standard specifications for streets.
I don't think we need to, it'll go into effect in thirty days.
Any motion for a print?
We need to adopt, oh, we need to, motion for adoption.
I will make that motion, same as the doubt.
Yeah, motion to adopt, have a second. Any discussion on this? There being no discussion, all of them cleared by aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same. Uh, I don't make, wait once, merge.
It didn't ask for it.
Okay. All right. Okay, I will get down here and, all the way down into mayor comments. We have with us tonight, uh, a new gentleman that's gonna take over Inland, and Keith, if you wanna get up and introduce him, or I can introduce him, his name, Mr. Hawkins, Mr. David Hawkins, but Keith, if you wanna congregate on it.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, uh, I would like to, uh, let everyone know that I've decided to retire. It's been a, an honor and a privilege to be able to serve in the community of Harrison. Uh, I appreciate all the support, direction, uh, that y'all have given. And this is David Hawkins, the new manager for Inland Waste, he comes with, uh, a lot of time in the garbage business, and I think he's gonna work just fine for.
You know, he has to be nice to me.
I told him, I told him that the secret to success in this community is to be nice to everyone and to make everyone happy.
Highly forward to working with everybody, I, like you said, I've been in this business for twenty years, and, uh, I've been in a lot of, uh, some big locations, and I'm really looking forward to, to working with everybody and making everybody happy, and, uh, I'm pretty impressed with what I've seen so far in the first week I've been here in the community, and I just look forward to it. So if you have any problems with, you know, feel free to give us a call, I've got a key cell number, and, uh, if anything comes up.
Did he hand you the phone already?
Yeah, he already did, actually, today was the first day, so, I gave him the phone, but I look forward to working with you guys.
Glad to have you here.
Thank you.
Okay, guess what I got, man? We got some certificates to pass out. Whoa, I don't understand my. Is Rick back, where did he hide?
That's in the big green thing.
Oh, was that, that that guy with the white stuff on his face?
But Luke, he's got color in his face, he's been on his way home.
Well, I told you to come back, Rick, and, uh, this, you know, this is not much of appreciation for y'all, the Light Up Harrison Committee, but, uh, on behalf of the city, I'd like to give this little service award to you. And this is presented to Light Up Harrison, appreciation and dedication to service in, in the beautification of our downtown and the promotion of the Christmas spirit to the city of Harrison, Arkansas, December twenty eighteen, and appreciate you and your community.
And, uh, I will just add this, this award isn't just for Liz and Mike and Billy and me. Paul, all summer long, was there, turning on the spot for us with barricades and everything when we're, like I said, there's Light Up Harrison, Light Up Harrison. He was there for us every time we called. Luke, Wade, fire chief, should have seen all the firemen on top there, on, on top of the fire truck putting the Christmas lights on the day of the parade. With me and Liz, and Matt, we lit them up, and each and every one of you guys, you're part of this, thank you. When we got the, we finally got a storage for all the Christmas stuff, Inland did come in with a crunching truck, and I've, I, I, we should add all the kids in town, because we crunched all those old desks. And Inland's been there every step of the way, they also this year donated us a bunch of nice big rolling trash cans, so we can put the big trees in store, right, and take care of the deer that you guys bought.
Okay, to move on, I guess we have some council members that will be leaving this at the end of this year. This will be our last meeting, unless I call a special call meeting, you know, that may happen, so go rule it out. Mr. Oak. And these all say pretty well the same thing, uh, this service award presented to council member John Oak in appreciation of your loyal and dedicated service to the city of Harrison. Oh, I gotta walk, he, he got these nowhere, I have to walk them out, thank you. Mr. Oak, stand up there, young man. Your deck's right on this. Appreciation of your loyal, dedicated service, this is all you get from the city. We appreciate your service, thank you. Okay, there's two people I want, down there in front, center of this room. Paul, right down here.
Right down here.
Still, until the 31st, I can still do some, put out orders, so, you can all down here. Okay, these are the ones that we got, we're going to have to replac.
Yes.
We'll have to, these are actually, we get, they were messed up, and they both say pretty well the same. They go to, "Service award presented to Chief of Police Paul Woodruff in appreciation of your loyal and dedicated service to the city of Harrison, Arkansas." You notice the date on that? Okay, this one also says, "Service award presented to Fire Chief Marvin Hope in appreciation of your loyal and dedicated service to the city of Harrison, Arkansas." Your date is also messed up. But congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you.
You know, I'm leaving, I'm leaving also, I'm pretty, I'm a tight one, and if you notice, in the past, the plaques we passed out were those Chief Walmart, I'm not going to say Walmart. Yeah, I noticed. Yeah, Chief Frank, Little B, Little Tepkins. Okay, I got overruled this year, and, 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 actually, I don't know if I'm over budget or not, I'm not parking now, this could be, it could be a first. But Mr. Jonas, look at me like you're up next, young man. Man and I have been together for several years, and he's guided me. Well, I don't know what direction, but he's guided me. And he's kept us out of hot water, like he's done what he's supposed to do. So, service award presented to, presented to City Attorney Ben Jonas in appreciation of your loyal and dedicated service to the city of Harrison, Arkansas. Does that say 2003 to 2018? Is that right?
That's right, yeah.
Appreciate your service. All right, we have one other one, and we'll have to get, Mrs. Taylor's not here tonight. It is the one left there for her. Like I said, this is my last meeting. I'm not going to say anything.
Well, then you need to come forward and let us thank you.
Yeah.
And he gets the frame.
That's that frame I threw out last year.
We as the city council want to thank you, and it's going to be different. He's been on city council for years, and mayor, we started out together, but I'm back next year.
Oh! Guess what, where I will be?
You'll be sitting out here.
No, I'll be, I'll be literally out the pasture.
Thank God. I had a lot of good things to say about you, but I couldn't remember any.
Okay, I know you're getting old.
Have one more. Now, I know you didn't want to do this, but on behalf of the city employees and the council...
Turn it that way.
Turn, let's turn this one. On behalf of this city, the citizens, we know the dedication, hard work, and compassion you've had in this city. No one knows what's in your heart more than these people. And we present this to you on behalf of, like I said, the citizens and the employees of this, in this council. Thank you for your service.
Thank you all. Appreciate y'all.
This is a really good one. Look at all those people that signed it.
All y'all are leaving, you can check your, also your name plates. Like I say, this is a short meeting. We've actually been some respect with people tonight, and I appreciate everybody that served. We're going to have a new council, we'll have new people here, but something's played the same in our city. I entertain a motion for... Oh, oh!
What's, what's that? They need to decide for sure what they want to do on there.
11 a.m.
Organizational meeting. The count? I forgot to tell you. Sorry. The council will be sworn in at 11 here, instead of at the courthouse.
On January 1st?
On January 1st, unless you guys opt to do something different. But your swearing-in will not be at the courthouse. Talk to them, thank you. So, and then normally, it would, you would follow up with your organizational meeting. So, is that still your pleasure to do?
As long as it's short.
It's up to you, it's your all's meeting, what committees you want to be on.
Does the city buy a lunch?
No, y'all are having lunch.
They got the brick plaque instead of the baking.
No, we don't have money for lunch.
So, I just need to make sure that's... Y'all's pleasure.
I heard she's cooking, she does every year.
She'll bring rolls.
I did not think all of you to raise.
January 1st, 11 here, right here.
And then just, do, does anyone have a problem with your dates? Otherwise, we'll keep it the same way as you had. I'm just thinking, do I need, do we need to make any notifications to the press?
I'd like to leave if I did.
We'll just leave it unless there's a change, but your, your normal dates. I just didn't know if I need to notify the press or anything else.
Okay, I'm sorry. You will, next up, and I'm not going to be here, but you will set all those in your organizational meeting. You have to do those every year. So, you will set that in your organizational meeting.
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, I entertain a motion for German. All are prepared by aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same.